Is that person Ms. Harris?
Excuse me. Oh gracious God, our Father, Lord, we come this afternoon to say thank you, Lord, for all the blessing, protection, love that you bestowed upon us today, Lord. We come asking you to take control of this meeting, Lord. We ask you to touch our mayor, continue to cover, keep him, our city council, Lord, that we come together on one accord and even, Lord, our city, we praying for healing, Lord. We thank you again for this opportunity. We thank you for all the blessing. We give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise. In Jesus's name, we pray and ask it all. Amen. Thank God.
And please remain standing, Councilman Crew.
Let's place the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Mayor McClintock.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Trade Charlie Suter.
Here.
Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Crew.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Mohammed. Councilmember Mohammed. Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember, okay, Willis.
Here.
There you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, six present.
We have six present. We have enough to start our meetings. We had no bid openings. Was there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion approved, this is the mayor.
Second.
On the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. Those minutes pass. Early in pre-council, I talked to you about two things that I wanted to add to the agenda. Since we have no business, I'm gonna ask you, can I get a motion in second to add the proclamation on fur housing and the purchase of the body cameras?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. They are both added. I'm gonna go to new business. Can someone get a city clerk, I mean, I'm sorry, city attorney?
Mayor, if I may make a motion, if we spin the rules and read R. 101 by title only.
In a second.
Second.
On the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. Mid-city attorney?
R. 1.
I assume you voted yes too on that. You voted yes too on that one.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Resolution to distribute Southland Casino Racing Charity Day proceeds by elected officials of the city of West Memphis as provided by law and for other purposes.
Hearing the re, can I get a motion in second to approve?
No, ma'am.
Second.
In discussion. Hearing, uh, mid-city clerk, you call the roll.
Okay, Alma Cat.
Yes.
Alma Crew.
Yes.
Alma Harris. Alma, Alma Harris. Alma member Hope.
Yes.
Alma Hutchinson. Alma member Mohammed. Alma member, Alma member Monday.
No.
Alma member Mary.
No.
Alma member Willis.
Yes.
If you may, you have one, two, three yeses and two noes. Uh, I mean, four yeses and two noes.
Again, Mayor, I just appreciate the council was absent at that meeting, so thank you for reading it a second time.
That motion fails. Four, four yeses to two noes. And city attorney, would you read O. 1?
O. 1 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement for the purchase of and sale of solar energy capacity and ancillary services for the city of West Memphis declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may ask, if we spin the rules and place it on the second reading?
I can do that.
Yep, he can vote to pass a motion.
Yeah. I can vote to pass. All right. On the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. It's on second reading.
This is an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement for the purchase and sale of solar energy capacity and ancillary services for the city of West Memphis declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may ask, that we further spin the rules and place the orders on this last reading?
Give it a second.
Second.
For just record, Ms. Clever, you call the roll, so I can.
Oh, this, yeah, go ahead now, okay. Alma member Cat.
Yes.
Alma Cat vote yes. Alma member Crew.
Yes.
Alma member Crew vote yes. Alma member Harris. Alma member Harris, absent. Alma member Hope.
Yes.
Alma member Hope vote yes. Alma member Hudson. Alma member Hudson. Alma member Mohammed. Alma member Mohammed. Alma member Monday.
Yes.
Alma member Mary.
Yes.
Alma member Willis.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, you have one, two, three, four, five.
Six, and I will vote yes to pass the motion. City attorney, third reading.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement for the purchase and sale of solar energy capacity and ancillary services for the city of West Memphis declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Hearing the re for, uh, third and final time, can I get a motion in second to approve?
Second.
Is there any further discussions from what we hear in pre-council, or do you want? Todd, just, just come on, just give a quick overview for the public, have some understanding on this.
Yes, what this is, is again, it's a power purchase agreement for a large utility scale solar facility that is being built within Crittenden County. It's going to be able to provide the citizens of West Memphis stable retail rates once we start taking delivery for it for the next thirty years. We have to use a partner because municipals are not able to take, uh, the benefits of the investment tax credit, so one of the big things is having a good partner. And I can tell you, our partner that's developing this is the largest developer of renewable energies in the world, so I think we've picked a good one, and these don't come along every day.
Thank you. Any further questions, somebody there want? Hearing none, on the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes. Will we get that ordinance number, a number, and then we're gonna go to emergency clause?
It's gonna be ordinance number twenty-five seventy-five.
Twenty-five seventy-five.
Mayor, if I may, uh, ask that we adopt section four and approve the emergency clause.
All right. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Uh, that's the approved emergency clause, on the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes. All right. Also, I'm gonna go back to the body cameras, um, that you all voted to add. Can I get a motion in second to approve with the purchase, uh, and I will begin with city attorney to work out those details before I ask them, buy the, the cameras?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, in discussion? That's good. Hearing none, on the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you all. Thank you all for approving these body cameras for our officers.
We'll bring it back to the next council meeting, budget amendment for that.
Okay.
And, uh, that way we can keep everything current.
Thank you. I appreciate this council, I mean, before I move on, I just definitely want to say I appreciate you all because this is gonna be great for our community and our police officers, so thank you all for your support. All right, um, we have permission for a certificate of public convenience for taxi cab service. Is Mr. Harden, are you familiar, are you part of this right here?
Yes, sir.
If it's you all wishing, cause we, he's now a citizen request, but I'm sure he wanna speak on this issue, so I'd rather bring him up to speak so you all can, right, come on up, sir. We know to get five minutes, give your name, your address, and.
Terry Harden, eighteen oh seven Highway one forty-nine, Tyrone, Arkansas. I'm here to ask to get a permit to put in a taxi cab company. My uncle had Razorback cab for twenty-eight, twenty-nine years here. He recently retired, so I was gonna see if y'all could give me the opportunity to put one in.
Would you be using the same inventory as your uncle?
Some of it, it would be different car, different vehicles. I would use his radios and things that he no longer uses.
Same personnel?
Uh, no. There's one or two drivers has contacted me if I got approved, said they would like to work.
This will be covered throughout West Memphis?
Yes, sir.
Well, about how many units do you have?
I was gonna start off with three, and then as business picked up, the word got out and everything, then add as needed, maybe get up to five or six.
Okay. So could we?
I was gonna start off at five AM and work till ten PM.
Work till what?
Ten PM.
Okay.
If there's no other question, I think what we know to do, you bring in your permission in, and then in two weeks you'll come back and the council will vote on it and decide whether or not to give you permission to do it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
New business.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and do this proclamation, I'm gonna ask Mr. Jim Carpenter, will you come forward, just a proclamation on fur housing?
I guess we're gonna do this Kofi style, a proclamation by the Alba Marco McClintock, mayor, where as April twenty, March the fifty-third year anniversary of the enactment of Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, the landmark legislation was amended in nineteen eighty-eight by the Fur Housing Amendments Act, which expanded the coverage of Title Eight of nineteen sixty-eight Act. Title Eight of the nineteen sixty-eight Act and nineteen eighty-eight Acts generally referred to as the Federal Fur Housing Act made it the nation's policy to assure that fur housing becomes a reality throughout the United States. By prohibiting discrimination in the sale, rental, or financing of housing on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familiar status, um, national origin, consequently, it is altogether fitting that we mark April twenty twenty-first as the time for rededication to the spirit and purpose of the national goal of fur housing for all and renewal and the commitment as citizens to make the promise of fur housing a reality for all Americans. So now therefore, our Marco McClintock mayor do proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-first to be fur housing month and invite all the citizens to observe in this month with the appropriate ceremonies and activities.
Come forward, Mr. I'm gonna present this to Mr. Jim Carpenter. Thank you.
My name is Jim Carpenter, I'm Assistant Planning Director for the city of West Memphis. Fair housing is one of the most important goals of the city and the Community Development Block Rent Program, and we look forward to serving the city for another year and furthering its fair housing goals.
Thank you. Ms. Mohammed? Left the record show that Councilwoman Mohammed just joined the meeting. All right, um, committee report. Did the police meet?
Yes.
Okay. Public Works?
Public Works met, but we didn't have enough to make the quorum. I can highlight some of the points we talked about, and I would like for the Public Works Committee to hang over a little bit after the meeting, council meeting today, to discuss some issues.
Okay, also, I do want to add about Public Works. Public Works have picked up over six hundred tires, and we still ain't got where we need to be at, so I have an ordinance that city attorney is gonna remove some things or add whatever he feel he need, so as to try to get a rain on these old tires that's popping up in our community. It's a thing that the city clerk had gave to me once we got that added, so city attorney is looking over, and I bring it to you all at the next council meeting for you all to consider.
Utility Commission met, and the West Memphis Chamber met.
Utility Commission?
Utility Commission, um, I just gotta recap. They had a number of issues or concerns that they were talking about, uh, but the big thing is that the safety for the Utility Commission, there were a hundred and forty-nine days since the last recordable injury, which if you, if you think about OSHA, and you think about people working and getting injured, one injury can cost you thousands of dollars, but to be able to go a hundred and forty-nine days since the last recordable injury is pretty, that's pretty commendable. And then the other commendable thing is they've gone five hundred and thirty-three days without a lost time injury, which is also commendable. The next item they talked about was the employment at the Utility Commission, that there are thirteen open positions out of eighty-three budgeted positions. The next item was the financial update for the year ending twenty twenty. The operation revenue was twenty-six million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-nine cents, and the operational expenses were twenty-six million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars at four hundred and twenty-one and thirty-four cents. The general manager, Todd, talked a little bit about the, uh, the adjustment for the winter that we had, where our utility cost went up to seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, a little over seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, and we've collected sixty thousand of that so far. We still got six hundred and ninety-eight thousand plus to collect. Those are being done in the next two months, is that not right, Todd? You got two more months to do that. And I thought that the, the Commission made a really good decision to spread this out over three months rather than to try to collect it all at one time. That gives our residents a break, and they need to break. The last item that was talked about was General Manager Ward Wimbish. As you remember, at the last council meeting, we were talking about a roofing, a roof that needed to be replaced over on one of the buildings at the Utility Commission, and we had the quotes in front of us, well, Delta Roofing got that quote, they were the lowest bid, they were at eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars, so, uh, I don't know if they've started or anything yet, but, uh, but they've got the bid, so that concludes the Utility Commission. The West Memphis Chamber, the West Memphis Chamber met yesterday, the fourteenth. The board's still meeting over Zoom rather than in person, but they're talking about getting back to in-person meetings very soon. The staff is currently assisting with a few of the city projects as well as upcoming events, with more detail to come soon. The Chamber is having a crawfish and cornhole event this Saturday at Meadow Brook Country Club, there's, uh, thirteen tickets left and they're forty dollars apiece. And the Fall Leadership Program, uh, we are now open for enrollment if anyone wants to, uh, and I think this is the, it doesn't say, but I think this is the elite, the adult leadership program, if I'm not mistaken, um, cause we have a junior, an adult, and the one in the fall is usually the adult, and the one in the spring is usually the junior, but, but if you know anyone that's interested, they need to contact the Chamber's office and ask for an application. And that concludes the West Memphis Chamber report. On the, um, the Public Works meeting, as I said, we didn't have a quorum, uh, but if, if you would like, Mayor, I could go through and.
Sure.
Read off some highlights.
You on the roll, go ahead.
Um, we don't have our, uh, city engineer in here, but there was a, there was a item on the agenda within Brentwood and Evergreen subdivision where the drainage system is actually sinking and blocking water and leaving it on the streets. And Amanda Hicks, our city attorney, she was here earlier, but I think she's gone for the day, uh, but she was gonna address that and let us, let you know what we've been doing to do it, but I do know that they're doing a, uh, whatever, it's called a drainage, some type of drainage inspection where they're checking all the drains, and we're gonna have to go in and do some repair work on some of those then. The Family Dollar Store, uh, is improving the road, uh, that was a project with the city and the Facility Board to improve that road at Family Dollar. Uh, if you've been out there, you'll know that that road really needs improvement, now that we've got the new companies on the end of that road, Carvana and the French Company down on the end, that road needs to be taken real good care of because there's a lot of traffic out there between Family Dollar and all those, uh, companies that are lining that road on both sides, so that's a good thing. I would like to give a shout out to our code enforcer, George Phillips. George, uh, collected nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-four cents of outstanding A and P taxes, uh, and that's out of just eighteen business here in the city, and I just noticed that, that, uh, usually we send them a certified letter, and that certified letter cost us six dollars and ninety-six cents. Well, times eighteen, there's some more money that he saved by going by and visiting with these companies. And, uh, he also collected over two thousand dollars from businesses and contractors operating without an active business license, and he did a really good job this last couple of months. And, um, I know he's not here today, but if he was here today, I just want to give him a shout out. Tire collection, uh, the mayor just improved, just increased the number, I had that, uh, last Tuesday that we had collected four hundred tires, but now the mayor's saying we got six hundred tires, which is, it sounds like a lot of tires, but if you drive around the city, you will see that there's more tires out there around our city that needs to be discarded. The dumpsters are still out, so you still got time to do that. And just a quick on the Great American Cleanup, or the Keep Arkansas Beautiful, uh, Councilor Mohammed, who is to my left, uh, told me today that our letter has been received by the Arkansas Group, and we have set a date at May the fifteenth. The dumpsters are coming at the county's expense, which is not gonna cost the city anything. Application for the cleanup, as I just mentioned, was received. And the other thing is, the counselors of each ward would be responsible for choosing the volunteers or collecting volunteers to clean their own wards up, and we'll have a dumpster located at each ward. And there's other details coming, uh, this is a project that I had no idea was this in depth, uh, with all the information that you've gotta do, and I appreciate Council Mohammed for helping me out, and I appreciate the workforce team for also helping. And, uh, if you're available this afternoon after this council meeting, we wanna sit down and talk just for a little bit, not long, won't hold you long, uh, and then you can be on your way. But, uh, that concludes the Public Works, um, and my reporting.
Okay. The airport meet?
They met this morning.
Okay.
Airport Commission meeting, the hangar number three rehab is underway, advertising has started for the new beacon project, bid opening is scheduled for April the twenty-ninth. This should be funded a hundred percent by the FAA with airports improvement project grant money and a special COVID relief grant that is available through FAA. Susanna with, uh, Garber Engineers is also continuing to work on submitting drawings and other paperwork for the North Apron Rehab Project. At this point, it looks like we may be, may get approval to do this project in twenty-twenty-two. This also should be funded one hundred percent by the FAA. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna move down to Councilwoman Mohammed.
Yes, sir, Mayor, we did meet on, the West Memphis Police Commission met Monday, April fifth. We really did not have a lot of business to discuss, but piggybacking on the tires that we picked up so many, that was one of the items we discussed in our Police Commission meeting, is that we are talking about perhaps getting some cameras to put in particular locations to try to catch any perpetrators who may be coming from, uh, another city or just coming from within the city of West Memphis, and it was discussed that if we put cameras in those particular locations, then perhaps we can catch a lot of people that are dumping tires, like at Martin Luther King on Avalon, at the Loop, different places like that where there are a lot of tires being dumped, so that's something that we are gonna be discussing with you as far as Chief West suggested that we get three to put in various locations, and we'll be talking more about that. Hopefully, the money will be feasible and we can get that done. Please excuse my tardiness, I was standing outside knocking on the door for about five minutes, and you all have already concluded your business, I'm so very, very sorry. And also, we discussed, as we know, the summer is getting warm, everybody's revving up, wanting to have barbecues, cookouts, things of this nature, and we've always had issues with loud music, and these issues will continue unless we put a bite in it, a real big bite, it's very disruptive, we have ordinances already, as it is a nuisance ordinance, but I just don't think that is, there's enough teeth in it to really cause our citizens to understand and realize that they are really, really breaking the law. So we discussed, looking into those ordinances to see what we can do to, uh, to put teeth in there to cause our citizens to somewhat behave themselves. Forgive me, I'm a mother and I talk like one. To somewhat behave themselves. We also talked about a lot of speeding, a lot of the motorcycles that are speeding up and down, uh, the roadways, and that's something we are gonna be looking at, the loud music, the speeding, uh, the dumping of tires, and these were basically the things that we discussed in our Public Works meeting. Chief West also gave his condolences for one of the, uh, retired police officers or inspector, and I believe his name was Mr. Birch Shelton, and I do remember him, he passed away, and of course, we are gonna be praying for his family continually, and that is my report.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mohammed, may I put, add something to that?
Sure.
We had a graduation class, Mayor, would you enlighten us on that graduation class from our academy?
Yes, this past Thursday, uh, Police Department had their graduation, they graduated the twenty-twenty B class, uh, we had eight outstanding officers who are graduating, who is now, I think, next week will start patrolling here in the city of West Memphis.
Good, we need them.
A good group of young men that was very excited about it, so we look forward to moving forward with our young officers.
Mayor, you talked, speaking of tires, I counted fourteen on Wallis Street, that they're all gone, you picked them all up, fourteen in one spot.
I appreciate that, we, we doing everything, definitely, that we can, to get these tires, and gonna work with EAPDD in the county to get them stored, also keep in mind, we see a high garbage cans out in front of the city shop, so if the individual have tires and they just wanna get rid of them, they can just drive out there and just dump them, and we're getting free of charge, you know, on the outside of the building. Did I miss any other committees? All right, uh, I got three quick things, real quick. First thing, I wanna congratulate our newest councilperson to ward two, position one, Dr. Gary Bruce. Are you standing up? Uh, Dr. Bruce is no stranger to this council, so I think he knows his way around, so we really look forward to working with him, uh, I guess in two more weeks and get started to have a full council. I wanna ask that, I wanna donate some of my, uh, charity funds, five hundred dollars to Lead Maurice Blair Organization, and five hundred dollars to Deers. Can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, that passes.
Excuse me. Tracy, do you know how much, the total amount of that is that we have?
I have to pull the man, let you know.
Yeah.
But I'll give them for you.
Well, I wanna vote, I wanna, I wanna, uh, give all of mine to the Wonder City Boys Club. All of it, yeah.
Let me, let me add this first, can I get a motion in second to add our charity given to the agenda? Can I motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper by.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, now, my charity that I gave to Deers and Lead, and Councilman Monday, who is your people?
Boys, the Boys Club, Wonder City Boys.
Wonder City Boys Club.
Yes.
That does, uh, the rest of your funds, or all you have?
All of it, yeah.
Or is there any other, uh, council people that want to donate?
I'd like to donate all of mine to the Boys and Girls Club here in West Memphis.
Yeah, County Boys and Girls Club. Council, Councilman Willis?
Tell them, want to give them a letter, make sure she record.
All right, and now, Councilman Hope. You? Who you want?
I'd like to donate all of mine to the West Memphis Christian, uh, I make, sorry. Missouri Streets Church of Christ, there's several groups, uh, kids goes on these trips, and it really helps some of them that don't have the money to go.
helps some of them that don't have the money to go.
Uh, Councilman Crum?
Well, I, I'm just bad, we're gonna roll here, so I might as well just go and throw my towel into, um, I would like to donate mine total amount to the Marion West Memphis Ministerial Alliance. Marion West Memphis Ministerial Alliance.
All right, Councilman Murray?
My balance to Wonder City Boys and Girls Club.
Uh, Ms. Mohammed, it's only you?
I'm going to be the lone ranger this time, I've not decided yet.
Okay.
But thank you.
Councilman Kat? Uh, Councilman Kat, uh, his balance is going to the VFW. Anybody else I'm forgetting? Well, now can I get a motion and second to approve everyone's?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna call Jim Jackson up, but whilst he coming, I also want to ask the city of West Memphis, all you councilpeople, uh, treasurer, clerk, and city attorney, and the citizens of West Memphis, please keep Lola Alockway in your prayers, if she's dealing with the loss of her sister right now, and she been here fifty-two years, so definitely we wanna keep her lifted up and keep her in, keep her in your prayers.
I just want everybody to, uh, remember that May the eighth, we're gonna have the tenth annual Mid South Great State took off in the Markham Lodge, we, we, we hope to set the complex over here, got some live music, club and stage, and asking everyone to, uh, social assistance, and have, uh, we're hoping to have a good event, but have a safe event, weren't able to have it all last year, uh, but I think we'll have to be, uh, busy with the music, and, uh, I hope everybody can, uh, that may be eight, at the Center of Markham Lodge.
Thank you.
Well, that, uh, the closing.
I had no appointments, uh, I had no presentations, uh, the announcement, it's, uh, Councilman Dr. Bruce will be joining us in two weeks, uh, the, our citizen request spoke on the taxi service, so the, anyone, uh, Councilman Hope?
I just wanna let Mr. Crum know that, uh, I had a birthday last Tuesday, don't miss any meetings, that one I did, but we had some people come out of town, they was gonna feed me.
I understand, I understand. What was that, like a hundred?
He made them buy.
Is that your hundredth?
It was good.
Well, I guess since everyone throwing a birthday, my birthday is this Saturday, this Saturday. Councilman Monday, my birthday, I want you to hear it, 'cause I know you owe me, this birthday is, uh, the seventeenth, yeah, you cook good fish, so hey, I'll be, no, 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 I won't be accepting gifts, I mean, but just know it's my birthday. Anyone else need to add anything?
Councilor Holt, that's a good reason to miss a meeting.
City Clerk?
Yeah, I just wanna make one small amount, announcement, that, uh, we're still putting together a veteran parade for the city of West Memphis this year on Veterans Day, which is November eleventh, and, um, if you wanna participate, we'll be getting out, uh, application for people to fill out here soon, uh, you can start contacting the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, either Mr. Warner Bailey, who is here with the city of West Memphis, and, um, so far, everyone seemed like they're very excited about it, all the people that we have already talked with, and we're looking forward to a big turnout, we haven't had one here in fifty years, so we're planning on, putting on...
If you're not a veteran, can you still be in the...
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, anyone that wants to participate, they still can participate. We just wanted to get it out.
Okay, well, I have nothing else, I wanna tell you all, we got some great things that's happening right now here in the city of West Memphis, and I need you guys to be a part of it, and we all together can make these things happen for our city, so, uh, with that being said, I have nothing, if anyone else, can I get a motion and second to adjut?
So moved.
Second.
Good.
All in favor, aye? Opposed?